If any questions, any concerns that come to mind, please reach out specifically to Chantrelle. I know we see Mr., is it John Bernard? No.
Yes.
He's not here, Daisy?
He's here.
With the hat on right there?
With the hat.
Okay, yeah, I think I met him on Friday, right? So I think some of y'all know who he is, but this is a property connected to something he's got going on. But again, please reach out, ask any questions that you may need to ask, okay? All righty. Okay, now let's move to a couple ordinances for final, and this first one is read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number nineteen of two thousand twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to award the bid for the South Williams Waterline Project, and it's bid number zero six seven five, and it's up for final, and the committee recommended to award the bid to the lowest bidder, which is David Lawler Construction LLC in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents, and I move to adopt ordinance number nineteen of two thousand twenty-five.
Let's see.
Okay, motion made to second it. This was already introduced. Tim, I believe our original budget or engineer's estimate was what for this project?
It was nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, and David Lawler came in at eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings.
Wow, yeah, so that's good, really good. So we got some savings there. This is gonna be South Williams, one of those critical areas. By the way, we did start the breeder town, or bretter town, how the engineers like to say it, but we say breeder town, of course. Yeah, like I say, bretter town. I want to say every time, no, it's not bretter town.
Never heard that.
But anyhow, but anyway, that started today, so got that going, and we'll get this one kicked off pretty soon if we have the council's approval. Again, it comes well over a hundred thousand under budget, so, or under the engineer's design, I'll say it like that.
Hopefully no change orders?
Right, hopefully no major change orders connected to it, that's right. Any other comment or question about this project? I mean, it's needed, it's needed in a lot of other places as well. It's just, we gotta keep on plowing through and try to budget money every year to get it done, but we're doing this at the top of the fiscal year this time, and the other one started, the process started at the end of last fiscal year. All righty, seeing no comments or questions, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries on that one. Now, this next one we have, I was wanting Alex to be here because I think that he wanted us to make a particular motion on this. I want him to kind of share with you all, counsel, what those exact thoughts were. I don't see them at this time, but Ms. Stacy, can we, are we allowed to move on and then come back to it?
We can go back to it.
And then maybe give him some time to get here, and then we could let him explain something about this particular item. All right, let's go on and then if not, I'll just share what I think some of the thoughts were behind that. But we've got a couple for introduction. The first one is read by Councilman P T, ordinance number twenty-three of two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-two-three of two thousand twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to award the bid for the two thousand twenty-five street rehabilitation program, whereas this bid was advertised in a negative time on May fifteenth, May twenty-two, and May twenty-nine of two thousand twenty-five, in accordance with law, whereas two bid proposals were received and opened on June seventeen, two thousand twenty-five. The first bid was from Apex Construction LLC of Anticoco, Louisiana, at five hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. A second bid was from Regional Construction LLC of Natchitoches, Louisiana, at six hundred and thirty-two thousand and ninety-one dollars, whereas the committee members recommended that the city award the bid to the lowest bidder, which was Apex Construction LLC, in the amount of five hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, and this is just for introduction only, Mayor.
All righty, okay, so introduction, Apex, Apex?
Apex.
Apex, Apex, Apex Construction? So you see what the amount is. This, y'all, would include, so we got a couple of street projects kind of going on, have been going on. We got a hundred thousand from the state for Barclay, so we did Barclay in the Sub area community. Regional Construction won that bid. We had a little different process for that because it fell in that threshold of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but they still won, we did like a three company bid process. So then we got some money from the state, I think about one, close to one point two million, that's coming in those housing divisions, those low to mod areas, low to moderate income areas, and Regional Construction won that one. That should start early July, all right? So just in a couple weeks, that project should get started. This one, this is from our own treasury, if you will, just trying to kick back and start a street program again, and so these streets would be part of Woodyard, this would be East Fifth, and I think a small portion of a little strip of street on Highland Park. So that's gonna cover those three streets, and I don't know if you saw the journal the other day, we did get about a hundred thousand to go toward St. Maurice, because St. Maurice was originally in it, but it came over the budgeted amount, but with that hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna help us significantly from the state to maybe do that street as well, so that's gonna be good for us, I think. So, but that's where we are on this. Hopefully, we could add St. Maurice Lane from Williams to East Fifth to it, with the hundred thousand coming from the state, that'd been a game changer, and allowing this possibly to happen this year. We just waiting on the governor to sign it, that's it. So once he signs it, we can kind of celebrate a little bit. But any comments or questions about this? Of course, this is a low bid that they took on this. I think we had, what, Clarissa, you were on the committee? How many bids did we have? I think it was, it says it here though, doesn't it?
I thought it was.
I think it was two, that's what I thought, regional and Apex, and I think they were about maybe seventy thousand apart?
Wasn't much, I'm not sure.
Yeah, sixty or seventy thousand dollars apart.
So have they done any work inside any other communities, like?
I think Apex, I want to say yes, but I really, yeah, okay, everyone knows, yeah, there you go.
They've done work for us before. I can't, nothing comes to mind at the moment, but they have done work for us.
Okay.
How long ago?
It's been a while. A while. Yeah, they be on Amulet, is what Donald's saying.
Oh, they were the folks that did Amulet?
Yeah, they did some work, some street work fairly recent for us.
Oh, okay.
Within the last two or three years.
Okay, okay, yeah.
They're out of Anticoco, they're familiar with all, you know, Natchitoches, all the streets and stuff.
Okay, because I know I had sat there, remember, I, it was just, I thought I remembered, but I was just wondering to make sure that we checked the water lines the next time, because I know with Amulet and stuff, we had to did that one street up. Yeah, that's all.
Well, that, I mean, that's possible, finding things like that in Natchitoches.
Okay.
So, look good. I mean, that street is always trying to do more streets, and, you know, and again, we've been fortunate to get some funding. I see the councilman, yes, sir, would you mind coming? And you know how this goes, he's a councilman now, he understands how it goes now.
Yes, my name is Wayne Holm, and did I hear correctly that this would resurface East Fifth Street?
Yes, sir, East Fifth from Royal to, I think that's Beenville, right near the hospital.
Yeah.
It's a very bad rough patch right there.
Yes, it is.
So it'll cover that patch up, so it won't get, you know, East Fifth is a pretty long street, so it won't get all of East Fifth, but it gets, and I'm glad you clarified that, it gets it from Royal Street, or Royal Drive, whatever it is, and all the way to Beenville. Right there, it's a bumpy, bumpy intersection right there, that four-way stop, yeah.
All right.
So it'll cover that.
Thank you.
It's a pretty bad spot, yeah. Okay, well, good clarification. All righty, again, this is just introduction, so if there any questions, please ask those. Again, I'm excited and hopeful that the hundred thousand does come through, because that means we can maybe do some more with what we have budgeted already, okay? All right, the next item that's for introduction is read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. If you brought your Snicker bar, this would be a good time to get it out, because this is pretty long.
Okay.
Ordinance number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Historic District Business Association Incorporated, whereby the city of Natchitoches will provide employees to the Historic District Business Association Incorporated in exchange for the services and benefits that the city receives from the operations of the Historic District Business Association Incorporated, whereas the city of Natchitoches is a municipality located in the state of Louisiana, parish of Natchitoches, governed under a Home Rule Charter and a Code of Ordinances adopted by ordinance number five of nineteen seventy-seven, and whereas further, the city of Natchitoches is specifically authorized under section one dot zero-six of the Charter of the city of Natchitoches to provide for the general welfare, safety, health, peace, and good order of the city, and further authorized under section one zero-seven of the Charter of the city of Natchitoches to enter into joint service agreements or cooperative efforts with other governmental agencies, and whereas further, the Historic District Business Association is a nonprofit Louisiana corporation that currently coordinates and manages several events in Natchitoches Historic District, including Festival of Light Celebration and the Antique Car Show, and whereas further, the HDBA also undertakes the following responsibility: participate on the hiring committee for the Main Street office, provide Main Street quarterly reporting, attend Main Street quarterly meetings, and take necessary steps to retain Main Street certification, including attendance at required meetings and providing necessary reports, and whereas further, the HDBA is authorized to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreements with the city of Natchitoches, and whereas further, the city council of the city of Natchitoches acknowledges that all of the above projects and programs were and are beneficial to the city of Natchitoches, whereas furthermore, specifically, HDBA has requested that the city and the HDBA enter into a cooperative agreement under which the city will supply certain employees to HDB, the HDBA will reimburse the city for the salaries and related benefits paid for these employees, and the HDBA will continue to provide the services outlined above, and whereas further, the proposed agreement between the city and the HDBA is set forth in attached cooperative endeavor agreement, whereas further, the city of Natchitoches and the HDBA have agreed to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement as set forth in the attached cooperative endeavor agreement with the following terms: One, the city does hereby contract with HDBA to provide employees to the HDBA as contemplated under the cooperative endeavor agreement. The employees assigned by the city to the HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement will provide services at the direction of the HDBA. Two, the HDBA will fully reimburse the city for the actual cost of the employees assigned to HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement, which said reimbursement shall include the cost of salaries and related benefits, including retirement, sick leave, vacation, comp time, workers' compensation, retirement, health insurance, et cetera. The HDB, three, the HDBA will pay annual administration fee of five thousand per full-time employee and two thousand per part-time employee, which administration fee will offset some of the costs of the city, and to establish in escrow the following claims that may be made by the employees assigned to the HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement, and for actions of the employees assigned to the HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement. Four, the city will amend its general liability insurance policy to include coverage of injuries, death, or loss of property associated with the actions of the employees assigned to the HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement. Five, the city agrees that the benefits provided by the HDBA to the city as more fully set forth above are consideration for the services provided to the HDBA. Six, the HDBA further agrees to continue to participate in and provide services which are beneficial to the city and parish of Natchitoches, Louisiana. Seven, this agreement shall be in effect for, effect one, five-year from the date of this agreement, as long as the HDBA continues to provide services that are beneficial to the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana, and reimburse the city for employees assigned to the HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement on the same terms as detailed in two above. In the event that the HDBA fails to provide the services that are beneficial to the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana, or reimburse the expenses set forth in paragraph two, then the city may terminate the agreement within thirty days written notice, with thirty days written notice. If the city fails to provide the employees to the HDBA as contemplated under this cooperative endeavor agreement, then the HDBA may terminate the agreement with thirty days written notice. This cooperative endeavor agreement may be extended under the same terms and conditions for two additional one-year periods by agreement of the parties heretofore. Eight, it is understood and agreed by the parties that the HDBA shall be solely responsible for the performance management of the employees assigned to the HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement, including definition of expected performance, evaluation, and appraisal of employees and organizational performance. The city shall only have administrative management of the employees assigned to HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement. The employment of all the employees assigned to HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement shall be subject to all city administrative policies and procedures, including, but not limited to, the personnel policies manual and all local ordinances and state laws or regulations which govern the city of Natchitoches. Nine, the employees assigned to the HDBA under this cooperative endeavor agreement will be reimbursed for travel at state rates, and any travel costs incurred by the city will be reimbursed to the city by the HDBA. Ten, it is specifically understood and agreed that continuation of this cooperative endeavor agreement is contingent upon the availability of funds to the HDBA for the reimbursement of the cost of the employees to the city if the HDBA fails to have sufficient monies available to it to provide for the continuation of this cooperative endeavor agreement, the cooperative endeavor agreement shall terminate. Eleven, this agreement may be terminated and/or canceled at any time by mutual agreement of the parties with thirty-day prior written notice, and this is for introduction.
We ain't all less, Nico.
I don't know if I can say cooperative endeavor agreement one more time.
All right, thank you, Councilman Nielsen. I'll kind of like just pass to Clarissa on this one, just kind of talk about what this agreement is. It's not unprecedented, I think it's a mutually beneficial effort between the city and the Historic District Business Association. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, sir, we do have some agreements like this that are in place today, and what it allows for us to provide employees to these community partners that allows their employees to benefit from the benefit selection that we have here at the city at a reasonable cost. Any other way, they would not be able to afford to offer their employees the benefit selection that we have here that would be beneficial to that person. It is a hundred percent paid by HDBA, as it is with the other organizations that we have this type of agreement with, and then they actually pay the city a five thousand dollar administrative fee annually to process anything related to that particular employee. So it's at no cost of the city, but it does allow our community partners to benefit from some of the benefit selections that we have here with the city. This one is very unique because we actually are housing that employee with our Main Street employees, so they have a very tight, tight relationship there as we continue all of our goals and objectives for Main Street. So this one is very unique in regards to, they are really going to be working side by side in all efforts regarding Main Street.
Do acknowledge Ms. Angela Dickens and Mr. Stewart. I'm not sure, between the two of you, if she's on HDB as well. Of course, I know there's Mrs. Dickens' husband there, but do acknowledge their presence here with us on today. So again, very important to tourism, we have, I think, did you mention Kane River National Heritage Area, we have an agreement like that?
Yeah, we do have, yeah, with the Kane River National Heritage, and also with Ben Johnson.
And Ben Johnson.
Foundation, yes.
And then, of course, asking that we do one here, again, they have one employee that we're processing, basically would be processing the payroll for.
Right.
So, any comments or questions, certainly ask those, if you have them now, if not now, anytime before the next meeting would be great to do that. All righty, again, this is just for introduction, so it will be on at the next, at the next meeting for vote.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this would be for all businesses, how many businesses, I guess I just wanted?
No, no businesses. Historic District Business Association is not necessarily a business, but an entity, so it would just be with that entity that supports tourism, and I, yeah, give some support to the merchants downtown, yeah.
Okay.
Clarissa?
No, no, that was fine.
Okay.
You said it well.
Okay, all righty. Okay, again, any questions, please send those our way. Okay, again, any questions, please send those our way. We've had a couple resolutions before we go back up and grab that other one. This first one is read by Councilman Harrington.
This is Resolution fifty-eight of twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with the state of Louisiana Department of Transportation Development, Office of Engineering, beginning July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And whereas DOTD lacks sufficient personnel and equipment to perform mowing and litter collection on a routine and continuing basis and wishes to enter into an agreement with the city of Natchitoches to perform maintenance directly related to mowing and litter collection on state roadways within the city of Natchitoches. And whereas the city of Natchitoches shall be reimbursed by DOTD the amount of eight hundred and seventy-five dollars per cycle per mile for interstate roadways, five hundred dollars per cycle per mile for divided state roadways, and two hundred and fifty dollars per cycle per mile for undivided state roadways. I move to adopt Resolution fifty-eight of twenty twenty-five.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. You know, this is just that standard agreement. Again, I shared before that we, through the mid-sized cities, we always try to press the state for more. They don't necessarily always give it, but we are thinking of ways, and we do have contact. Thankfully, we have some good relationships with some DOTD folks in the city and just trying to figure out more ways to kind of keep the area cut that they're supposed to cut out there. And we're thinking of our plans of how we can keep our area cut as well. So, so we were just having a conversation, a meeting another day, Donald and I, with a DOTD person. But, you know, I don't know, I haven't, I'm sure it's the same amount of money?
It is.
The same amount of money? How much is that? Do you remember? Did it say anything?
It says it in the ordinance, twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand total.
Yeah, and that only gets us.
Four cuts.
Four cuts, yeah. Yeah, with them. So that's not a whole lot, but we're trying to think about ways in which we can do some better maintenance, have them to do some better maintenance out there. So, all right. Any comments or questions about this?
A little better than two years ago.
The money wa, the, okay, yeah, yeah. Maybe a little better, but it always seems like it's not enough. I mean, as we go to these little conferences, that's one of the big topics is how can we get more funding there to keep our entryways looking, looking better? So, but, all right, any other comment? Okay, seeing, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next resolution, we, this is part of our housekeeping, and it's read by Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero-five-nine of two thousand twenty-five, a resolution appointing the city attorney and assistant city attorney for the city of Natchitoches. Be resolved that the city council does hereby take convenings of the mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. as reappointed Alex Washington as the city attorney for the seat of Natchitoches in meetings with the section zero-five-two of the Home Rule Charter. Be further resolved by the city of Natchitoches hereby authorize reappointment of the fourth assistant attorney and upon recommendation of the city attorney and the mayor that Donald T. Morsen?
Mersson.
Mersson.
Daniel T. Mersson.
Okay. Claude Benjamin Jr., Gary Conley, and Stephen Oxhandel. Did I pronounce his name correctly?
Oxhandel.
Oxhandel.
I did. I hereby concur with the point of this assistant city attorney served in convening with the previous sections five-zero-two C of the Home Rule Charter. And I.
Four-zero-two.
No. Thank you. Resolution number five-nine of two thousand twenty-five be approved, be adopted by.
No, that's it, that the end of it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, look, I'll just say, very dynamic attorney team. Everybody kind of does their, has their own little specialty when it comes to Alex, of course, leading the group. There are some litigations we've been a part of that brought some revenue to the city. I know we got one coming up with the water situation.
Yeah.
Something about something in the water. Of course, Tommy writing some of the ordinances. Although Floyd, he does a little work. Obviously, he's now first ADA, so he has a heavy caseload over there, but there's still some things he does for us. Of course, Gary, he's here. You know, he reads a lot of those agreements and things like that, that we contracts and stuff like that. And then, of course, Stephen Oxhandel and his firm with, with a lot of things related to employment and labor. So I think a really, really good team, and I'd like to put them back up before you. Any comments or questions, Council? Any other comments or questions? I think we got a motion, but not a second.
Not a second, yeah.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. No additional comments or questions? All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. I want to go back up to ordinance number twenty-two of two thousand twenty-five because Alex and I were talking, and I wanted to make sure I got it correct, but we actually want to ask for a table on this, Council. Can you explain what it is so I don't say something I shouldn't say?
Okay. Well, I'm dealing with some litigation of other jurisdictions, dealing with lease agreements, wireless providers. So I was looking at our agreement that was put together by, I think, a little Gary and Ed, and I saw some provisions that we can work on. I think the three percent increase, we could make that maybe with some minimum increase on a annual basis, but also add a clause that says a market rate. Since technology is changing every year, I think we can have a three percent minimum that they pay us, but if it's higher, maybe we can add a clause that says also a market rate. We had a clause where we talked about additional terms, but in that provision, it said that that group kind of decided about the option for additional terms. I think the council and the mayor should play a role in if we want to do it for the additional five and additional five terms, because it's changing so fast. I don't want us, the city, the community, to lose some money based on, you know, that type of agreement. And it's just from the last opinion I read in the case I'm dealing with, and those kind of ideas came to me. I mentioned it to Ed, brought it to Gary, and I'm asking you all to table to allow us to maybe include some provisions like that.
Because I guess you were telling me the agreement doesn't end, like, when is it?
Yeah, the agreement expires actually in twenty twenty-eight, and I think one of the term sheets of documents they sent over in the version said twenty twenty-five, so it made us consider making changes early, but we got.
So we actually have more time then?
We got three years to enter into another agreement.
Okay.
Usually, they try to do it early, so I'm saying it expires in twenty twenty-eight, but obviously, you know.
We'll do it before twenty twenty-eight, but we got time to think about some other details, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Yeah. And I think, Ms. Carolyn?
Can you just give me a brief? I didn't know what you were saying.
Ms. Carolyn asks for a brief on, we're going back to ordinance number twenty-two, and it deals with a lease agreement, fourth lease amendment with the new singular wireless.
Make a motion, we table ordinance number zero-two-two.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Again, I thank for the points that Alex laid out. We'll get this back, but we do have more time. I just want to make sure that we're, that it's most favorable to the city as Alex is saying, these things change so frequently with technology and things of that nature. Any comments or questions about this particular motion to table? All right, seeing, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, and thank you, Council, for understanding. Again, we'll get something back. It doesn't have to be this year, but it'll certainly be before the agreement ends. All right, we have some announcements that we would like to share. Our next meeting is going to be July fourth. City offices will be, I'm sorry, July fourteenth. All right. Somebody like, no, we're not meeting on July fourth. Yeah, but July fourteenth is our next meeting, and July fourth, we're going, the city offices will be closed on that Friday, July fourth, and I know everybody's looking for a great weekend there. Regroup as we are in hurricane season. I think they had a named one the other day. I don't think any damage was made or somebody, something's going to be named. And then we always encourage people to download the Go Natchitoches app. It's a really good tool to know what's going on in the city. Farmers Market, we've got a few more left, right? I know we got to get through July, we get all the way through July. All right, so we've got several more left, so we'll be back, we'll be on the riverbank this time. We'll be back down. All right, we came up because of Juneteenth festivities, but from eight to twelve, we got, still adding new vendors, I think, you know, so we want to certainly patronize those vendors that we have. Okay, I love you to death. This seems like the summer, the NSU Summer Dinner Theater is going to be actually held at the venue on Front Street. And this one, y'all, they've got it from June seventeenth through twenty, through the twenty-first, which we've had that already. That was, that was last week. And now you have this week, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. And, you know, really great performances. You get dinner, there'll be dessert, great food, all put on by NSU, and it's a good performance. I've had an opportunity to be to attend one of these. I know Councilman Holmes, he's been to a few of them, so, you know, it's worth it. I know fifty bucks, but again, a good meal and a really good show that you're going to get right here. And of course, you're supporting, you know, our theater performance division at Northwestern, so that's great. All right, you got the third annual Zidico Food Truck that's going to take place on the twenty-eighth, which is this Saturday. All right, so the times, I think the times have been put out, this is just say today, but look at Facebook for the times for that, but again, that's happening on Fairgrounds. Yeah.
It's been rescaled to July twenty-sixth.
Oh, July twenty-sixth, so this is a little bit old, okay? So not, not this Saturday, so we'll get a, we'll get an updated flyer. Thank you for letting us know about that. We'll get an updated flyer on that. All right, this is the Council on Agent. They always do a fan drive, and it's really important that, you know, those individuals who are the elderly among us, that we take care of them. I think that's, you know, important that we do it. So the fan drive is taking place, ten to noon on this coming Friday, and it's the Council on Agent building. I think most people know where that is, but it's on Kaiser Avenue, ten sixteen Kaiser Avenue, across from the movie theater. So, again, if you can contribute to that in some kind of way, fans or monetary donations, that would be great. The Art Guild and Gallery Paint Like Matisse Party, Matisse? This is going to be Thursday to twenty-sixth, this Thursday, from five-thirty to eight-thirty P.M., thirty-nine bucks to a ten, and you can register on Eventbrite. So that's something, I think that should be an interesting event to attend. All right, this is a big one, one of the biggest ones we have throughout the year. We're going to start really promoting it on tomorrow. I know they've been doing some things on the Sports Hall of Fame website. I mess with Eddie a little bit, but he might take that seriously. But just the fact that, of course, all of these are important. Vicki Johnson, you know, working in Kachada for twelve years, right down the road, you know, she did a, she was a great player. I know Clarissa tried to channel some of that, enter Vicki Johnson on Saturday. We let her hit four points. We let her hit four points on Saturday, right? But we got Danny Granger, Indianapolis Pacers or Indiana Pacers, but of course, big name is Nick Saban, all right, who coached at LSU, won a national championship at LSU, then went on to the NFL, came back, Bama had a position open, and we know the rest is history there. But he did give the LSU Tigers a championship, and so we're going to have him here. So this is always one of the great events. Of course, there are some writers as well. The stories about these individuals at the induction ceremony is what's really amazing. But there are a few free events that don't cost anything. You have the welcome reception is taking place on Thursday from five to seven. It's going to be at the Sports Hall of Fame here on Washington and Front Street. You also have, there's the Rockin' River Fest, I think is what they name it, on Friday. I think the time is six o'clock on there, but I need to double check that, but that's happening on the riverbank. That's a free event. And then the training event for kids. They get a certificate to raising canes, they get a free T-shirt, they get to, you know, catch the football from the coach and the players and, and all of those individuals. So really, really great events. We want to see Natchitoches people there on the riverbank. We want to see them a part of all of these free events. And their welcome reception, they do have hors d'oeuvres are going to be served, I think, eventually at the welcome reception. Again, the public is welcome to come to it. So, great, great, great. One of those great events in the city of Natchitoches that we're really looking forward to that. We had a great Juneteenth. It was absolutely fantastic. I think this weekend is going to be fantastic as well, and then there's something happening for the July weekend also. I think we're going to get to that. So July fifth, there is a market, all right, right after, you know, of course, the Independence Day holiday, so July fifth, so again, participate in those markets. And this is what we're talking about, July fourth and fifth, red, white, and blue balloons, hot balloon event, the weekend of Fourth of July. Again, they have the prices per carload. It's free to enter in terms of, now, the hot balloon, to get an air, that's going to cost, but in terms of going down to watch the fireworks, to listen to the live music, you know, things like that, that's going to be free to do. You get to meet the pilots and things like that. So, again, a lot of things going on right now in the city. I know it's hot. When we think about Juneteenth that we just celebrated, I mean, we had, look, I took it easy on everybody this year in basketball. I kind of let some of other people shine, you know, I took a, kind of tick off, you know, but, man, that was messed up. But, but we had a really good time. The basketball was really good. I didn't get to make it to Chubby Curie, I think that's how you say his name, Curie, something like that, at the Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame, but I heard that there were some folks there. And then the parade was really great. I mean, it was three o'clock, but people were out there on the route, so that, that was really good. And then we came back for some music and some vendors, so it was just a really good atmosphere. Wouldn't have been able to happen without, you know, our law enforcement presence, we had heavy law enforcement presence. Fire folks, they play a role in terms of when to open things back up and also being ready to, if somebody is, you know, heat exhaustion or something like that. Community development, of course, and the planning and then the aftermath, and Public Works as well, everybody playing a part, even Parks and Rec with what we did at the, at the Recreation Center on Saturday, and just a really good committee that helped to put everything in place. So it was really, really great, and those things wouldn't have happened without everybody's involvement and participation, all right? Did we say everybody, Clarissa? We leave anybody out? We'll get them?
Yeah, I just want to mention the mayor had zero.
Yeah, I think I had about, I only took like one shot though.
And his team lost. And his team lost.
Yeah, I'm a defensive guy. I'm a defensive guy, you know? Oh, no, I will say, now, Chris brought a guy, Chris' best friend, Denzel, I mean, he's our same age, and we were like, man, I'm like, Denzel can't play ball.
He been playing a little bit.
Denzel hit like, he said he hit eight three-pointers. Now, he hit a lot. I don't know if it was eight, but he hit a lot of three-pointers.
He hit about three on you.
Oh, come on now. No, no, he's three, he was wide open, he was wide open, he was wide open. All right, but no, good, good time. Yes, Ms. Roy?
What was the crowd like?
It was high. A large number attended.
It was, the riverbank, I don't think it could fit anybody else.
It couldn't. It was packed.
If you go to the city of Natchitoches Facebook page, we just released a video, you know, and it kind of gives you a look of the crowd, but even at the MLK Rec Center, it was, it was crowded there. And I mean, the parade route, they have folks there. I didn't, you know, three o'clock in June is kind of hot, but folks were still kind of in different spots. So again, it was a really good weekend.
If anyone have any pictures, videos, send them to me, please, from the parade.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other, that's all our announcements?
I do want to say, because you brought me up a couple of times with Nick Saban. I do want to say, now that he's not the coach at Alabama anymore, I was at LSU when he was our coach. I was at the national championship game, so I love Nick Saban.
Right, right.
Nick Saban made LSU what it is today.
Right, right.
I mean, if you all remember what LSU was like before Nick Saban, it was pretty rough.
So did he deliver the first championship?
Well, no, the first one was in nineteen fifty-eight.
Oh, nineteen fifty-eight, okay. And so then he brought the next one in oh-three?
Yeah.
It was oh-three, and then we won scattered out a little bit then. Yes, Mr. Mike Stewart?
No, thank you. Phil Collins, shots, comfortable.
No. Okay, okay. Yeah, so that'll be fun. No, you got to love him. He's a great coach, and had he not decided to go to the NFL, he probably, that could be LSU with maybe six or seven national championships, so, but it's all in good fun. be LSU with maybe six or seven national championships, so, but it's all in good fun. But please support this weekend with the Sports Hall of Fame, all right?
Carolyn, you was saying something?
I think we're at the end of, see, okay, all right, good. All right, a lot of great events happening, please attend the Sports Hall of Fame. Don't forget our book study tomorrow. I think we're chapter what? Chapter nine, I forget who's doing it.
Oh, eleven, see, half...
I think it's something.
Okay. Well, get caught up on your reading. Get caught up on your reading. All right.
Make a motion, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.